First item on the agenda, Secretary's report.
Mr. Chairman, we review the regular school committee meeting minutes from December 21st, 2017. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as written. Second.
Motion made and second. Questions, comments, discussions on the minutes. Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Treasurer's report.
She is in the building but is momentarily delayed.
Delayed. We'll table that until her arrival in the room. Moving on to number four. School committee officers election appointment for 2018. For that, I will turn it over to Doc.
As specified by our annual tradition, if not guideline, the floor is now going to nominate the Chair of the School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hall again if he's willing.
Here's the... Do you have this... Okay. Do you wish to offer that as a formal motion, please?
I do. I, Julie Mitchell, hereby move the election of Joseph Hall as Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District Committee Chair as required by section IE of the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District Agreement and Policy BDA/DB of the School District's Policy Manual. The term of office shall commence January 2018 and conclude at the regular meeting held January 2019.
Motion made and for a second.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
None of the nominations close.
Second.
Motion made, move the nominations. Second, any discussion on moving the nominations? Hearing none, we'll move the nominations. We have a single candidate. Those in favor?
Aye.
The Chair will now take over the meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for the consent to showing acceptance for all. Next, Vice Chair. I will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominate Chair Jerry Finn.
Got a nomination, and I'll take that as a second on the nomination. Mr. Finn, do you accept it?
I do.
Motion made and the nomination is accepted.
If you're going to want to offer the nomination, just to be in the spirit of...
I hereby move that the election of Jerry Finn as Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District Committee Vice Chairman as required in section IE of the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District Agreement and Policy BDA/BDB of the School District's Policy Manual. The terms of the office shall commence January 2018 and conclude the regular meeting held on January of 2019.
Motion made and second. We have the nomination on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Finn's nomination is put forward.
Thank you very much, folks.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Move the closing nominations.
Motion made.
Second.
Second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries as we have a single candidate. Thank you very much, Mr. Finn.
Thank you.
Next, Secretary. That is an appointment, but we do traditionally open that to the floor for recommendations, suggestions, nominations, if you will.
I'd like to recommend Anthony.
Mr. Finn, do you accept that?
Yes, you do. You have to check the home office.
Got it. Move the nomination to be closed for that. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? As we have one person sent forward that is appointed, you have everybody appointed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item up, Assistant Treasurer. Any nominations, nominations for Assistant Treasurer?
Deputy Senior Farmer, who can you member from the room?
So we have an opening here for that.
Sounds like you still have an appointment.
I would recommend it, Chuck.
You can say no, Chuck.
I only accept.
My second.
But you don't get mileage though. Yes, I do. No, you do. I do. That's how the whole thing started.
Do we have any other nominations for Assistant Treasurer?
Will we close the nominations?
We have a motion to close nominations. I hear a second.
Second.
Motion made and second to close nominations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Finn, thank you very much for accepting this appointment. Next up is the payroll AP warrant signers. Three.
Short hands, do you want me to tap the rings?
I'll stay on.
Me too, if you want.
I'm assistant, but Mr. Evelyn, who's unavailable, I'll step into it.
So you'll step up to be the third? So we'll take that with the... Julie, Mrs. Mitchell, Mr. Hanrady, Mr. Bartlett will be the three primary warrant signers. Thank you very much for that. Any questions, comments, discussion? For that appointment hereby made. The alternate payroll signer. Paul will take it. We'll do that. Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Just had a solemn little discussion today. So unless there's any objection, I'll have nominated Mr. Ross to put up the... or appoint Mr. Ross to that position. Thank you very much. Ms. Oger, having been arrived, if there's no objection, we'll return to the Treasury Treasurer's report.
Yes. Sorry, I was a few seconds late. So as of the end of December, we had $5,256,976.41 and those funds were in local funds in the amount of $4,450,274.46 and $806,701.95 in project funds. This was a pretty slow month. We did receive a significant amount of money in grants, but all of the costs for the month were right as expected and anticipated. And as I said, you know, there was a lot of time off during the month, December, so it was a relatively slow month. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Oger?
Will we accept as written?
Second. Motion made and second. Motion made by second by Mr. Hanrady, second by Mr. Lovin to accept the treasurer's report as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Up to number five, student recognition.
The Chairman, within the School Committee, it's my pleasure, according to my distance of attack, Principal Steele, to make a special recognition of our Gillette-based football team and their incredible season of this year. Those individuals joining us, please come forward along with your partner. This is the official recognition that we received earlier at Gillette. We are Valley Tech and the individuals represented here are the first vocational technical schools to play in a Super Bowl at Gillette in the history of the athletic playoff program. Incredible achievement. And we're certainly proud of the contributions made by each and every one of them. And we do have a recognition banquet that is scheduled coming up with more details to be provided on that. We watch these young people and watch the coach, actually watching before the season as well. It's so critical to get ready for a season, as anyone knows. But for the smallest voc tech school in the large voc tech competition, they have accomplished things which have never been accomplished in the 53 history of Valley Tech. Congratulations.
I'll add to that. It's... I've been out there a lot to give these guys trophies. They don't like these second-place trophies. They usually bring back to me and put in the trophy case, but they're winners and they always have been, still are. This is our finalist trophy, but I can tell you an experience that we'll never forget. I was going to say won't be forgotten soon. I don't think we'll ever forget it. But you guys have left your mark on the school. You as well, Coach. Just an incredible team. What you did together, most of you graduating, you left a legacy behind you too. So thank you guys for all you come to the school, bringing our community together. I think for you, for us, for everybody in our community, it was tremendous experience. Thank you for that.
And one added, it's not just about winning on the field, it's about how you carry guys, getting down, how the coach leads you through all that process. Thank you very much. Student representatives, Holland and Jake.
Hello. Recently, the student council gave administration, like all the admin gifts out, and those are basically like small little gift bags with things like candy, snacks, popcorn. And we also made signs for all the administration that had like thank you notes on them, thank you note and everything. And also coming up in the spring, we have the Hyannis Conference and there will be 16 to 20 students attending.
In addition to our MASC trip to Hyannis, our MASC candidate Joshua DeLuca, who was running for state board as president, he has finally chosen a campaign slogan and it's "A Dash of DeLuca." It's a cookie theme. It's based on the ingredients to great leadership. Also with that, we just recently submitted our excellence book for the 2016-2017 year because it will be graded on last year's project. They graded from a panel of board made up of different student leaders that are on these state executive board and state admin and advisors throughout the student council state board. They grade different things like projects we do, endorsements from people like Mr. Steele and Dr. Fitzpatrick and everything like that. So once we take our trip to Hyannis, we should have much more done. Any questions?
Just a message of appreciation. I appreciate the personalized poster and also the gift of popcorn. I'd like to share the fact that I held the popcorn until I could enjoy the Patriots game with my two-and-a-half-year-old grandson. And one of the challenges for a grandfather is to train a grandson how to brush his teeth. One way, grandson had some of the popcorn and caught a kernel in his tooth. He immediately announced to me that he was going to the bathroom to brush his teeth. So it's working.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the National Grid Energy Project. Mr. Ballen.
A little less than two years ago, National Grid approached us about doing an energy project with the students. They wanted to have displays made that they could take on the road that we could use also to show energy-saving products and features and construction and other types of things with energy in mind. So they had grant money, they funded the project, but it really took quite an effort to make this all work because when they first said they wanted demonstrators or some sort of model, we were thinking big houses and things you'd have to trailer around on a trailer truck. They said, "No, no, no. Only, you know, two people would have to carry these into a van and load them and put them into a home show or something like that." And the plan is for these to actually go on the road to home shows and other places. So it really took a lot of teamwork and brain power to make what you see before you on these displays. So to get them to manageable size as well as to get the information out of the displays as well as the student learning that took place, not just designing and building them, but doing the research on things like heat pumps and different types of bulbs and insulation types for houses. So again, a very good project. It was very much a learning process for the teachers, students, and the folks at National Grid. They didn't know what parameters were, but they were also incredibly surprised at the products we ultimately made and the knowledge of the students. So they couldn't believe the pictures and other things that I sent them as well as they met some of these students as well when they were here for the meetings. So again, very proud of these individuals for the work that they put in. It's many, many hours behind the scenes here in building these displays and making sure that they function properly because they are going to be maybe rough-housed a little bit on the road, so they should be able to handle it. So we're going to start off with the HVAC folks down there. We have Jack Scholman and Maria Batista. They'll tell you about a heat pump system and how they developed it.
Okay, so as Mr. Ballen was saying, this is a heat pump system. So it actually heats and cools your house. So we were challenged to find an energy-efficient system, so we chose a heat pump. And ours is a little different than a normal, big-scale house residential heat pump system. Normally, a residential heat pump system, you'll have a four-way reversing valve, but our system is too small and doesn't have enough pressure to be able to have that four-way reversing valve. So Maria had the challenge of coming up with a way to design the piping so we could actually reverse the flow of the refrigerant so we can have it heat and cool on the inside and heat and cool on the outdoor corner. So she used four reversing, not reversing valves, sorry, solenoid valves so we can reverse the refrigerant so you can actually heat the inside in the winter and cool the inside in the summer.
And so the reason that we chose the heat pump was because it was the most efficient. And what we found is that the reason that it's the most efficient is when it's on, instead of making its own heat, it's actually taking from the outside or from a different space and transferring it to another place, so it's not using that extra energy to create more heat. It's just using what it already has, so it's a way to like save, it's a way to save money in the long run. Even though it's more expensive initially to install typically than like a furnace or a boiler, it will save you money in the long run because it's so much more efficient. And a side benefit that is good is that since it can heat and cool, you don't have to get two systems. You can just have the one in your house. You don't have to have like an AC window unit and a furnace. You just have the heat pump system.
That was probably the biggest challenge is to make that one smaller. It's a much larger system. So it took months and months of work and redesigning, so I've been working with them quite a bit on that, so great job, guys.
Thank you.
Maria, if you want to go ahead and have a seat there, because you're very uncomfortable with that brace on.
She's an established soccer star.
Over here in the center, we have construction tech. They work on some housing developments. They have different insulation or R-values in the houses that they created. Again, we once, at one point, we thought of building one big house with different types of insulation around it, but this idea came up and they stuck with it and created some great projects. We have Christian Fenoff and Matthias Pacheco. If you would, I'd tell them about your project.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Christian Fenoff. This is Matthias Pacheco. And this is, we did this project. We built three houses representing different house, excuse me, installations. These are for the National Grid and the Mass Safe Energy Project. These represented the Mass Q Convention in Foxborough. Three houses were built to code by modeling as follows: non-insulated houses, fiberglass insulation, and then here we have foam insulation. Now moving into the non-insulated house. This house models a home with no insulation installed against the unconditioned environment. In this case, it was very easily built houses prior to insulation codes. This is mostly prior to 1930 is when you'd see houses with no insulation and little space in the cavities. 1980 was the year that many of the cold climate states stepped up and started to make energy codes to retain heat in their homes.
Okay, and now we move on to the fiberglass insulation. So this house models a home with fiberglass rolls or batts installed in the areas adjacent to the unconditioned elements. So fiberglass insulation comes in rolls of four-feet batts with different widths for installation. The rolls or batts can be craft paper-faced or unfaced depending on the application. The reason for the craft paper facing is for an air barrier. And in some installations, poly-sheathing is applied over unfaced fiberglass insulation as another type of air barrier. And the thickness of the insulation dictates the R-value of it. And the R-value is the unit of measurement that we use to measure the efficiency and value of the insulation. So meaning the thicker the fiberglass insulation, the higher the R-value. This insulation can be placed in walls, floors, ceilings of a building. And it's a method used over the longest period of time and is still used today. Fiberglass is the colder climate regions is slowly going to the wayside due to ongoing energy code changes which are always increasing the minimum R-value. And we simply cannot fit as much of it in a wall cavity to meet the minimum requirements.
So now moving into the spray foam insulation. This house models a home with spray foam installed in areas adjacent to the unconditioned elements. This is the newest and by far the most efficient form of energy conservation. It enables you to get a much higher R-value and a smaller cavity. It's very costly. It's approximately three times as much as, say, your fiberglass insulation. But as it is used more and more, it costs as slowly as it is. Due to its glue-like tendency, the spray, the spray foam adds structural strength to a building. It's a polyurethane-based and a two-part product that is mixed just as it's getting installed.
So the two different products are in tanks out in a special-equipped type of truck that are pumped through the heated lines into the building to an installation gun that mixes the two parts together and sprays the final mixed product up. Special training and safety guidelines are mandatory for the installers of this product. Because of the chemical reaction that happens as the product is getting installed, it releases very strong and dangerous fumes. And so the installers must wear suits and headgear that has air pumped in from the outside. It's widely used in extremely high-efficient green building home. Spray foam is broken down into two distinct types and they have very different uses, costs, and R-values. There are closed cell and open cell.
So looking at closed cell foam. This is represented with closed cell foam. It is about, its R-value is about 6.5 per inch of thickness. It's not water permeable, which makes it excellent air and vapor barrier. Areas that you'd find this installed would be exterior walls, ceilings, roofs, floors, under concrete slabs and it can, slabs, excuse me, and it can be used below green. Closed cell is much more costly than open cell due to the makeup, it's higher R-value.
Open cell foaming, so the R-value is about 3.5 to 3.6 inches, well, per inch of thickness. And it's water permeable, which restricts the areas and applications where it can be used. Areas that would, you would find open cell foam installed would be walls, ceilings, and roofs. And so in conclusion, in doing this project, we learned quite a few different points of the design and construction of modern-day homes. Some of those points were current and antiquated ways that houses are and were designed. The unique way we frame houses today to be able to insulate them properly. The parts and processes of residential house framing. The diverse ways and throughout the processes of energy conservation. The pathways to modern building code and energy code infrastructure. And the way that the codes have evolved over time. And we also worked with other shops to build this and it was a multi-trade and department team effort. So we, as carpenters, could learn from the other trades, shops involved. Thank you, and any questions?
Just a question. On the phone, Minsley, you said it's open cell and closed cell, I guess?
Yes, sir.
The guy, I had a guy come just recently to my house and he said he was going to blow in insulation, but I had the impression it was like popcorn, like loose. Is that also a type of insulation they use?
The way this foam insulation will set is it comes in as a liquid and it will set over time and it will actually expand to look like this. So when it comes out of, when it comes out of the gun is what it is called, when it mixes with the polyurethane, it's wet and natural makes it dangerous as the fumes are very flammable. And so this will set like this.
Does that get hot?
Yes, yeah. It actually, it does hot enough. So that is what gives it the impression that the heat will not escape from the...
One other question, if I may. As far as fire retardant, is one better than the other?
So fiberglass, actually, the backing on fiberglass is what is mostly flammable. Fiberglass mostly is smolder. When this sets, it's not, it's not flammable per se when it is wet and it is, during the installation, it is extremely flammable, which is why we take high precautions in installing it.
But it's not after dry. That's a good thing.
Oh, so if you look here, this is a subthermal camera. And looking at all of these houses, this gives you, this is used by conservationists and to look at these houses. Can you see their temperature on this one is around, say, 72, 73 degrees. And then these open areas here will actually be, they will be warmer because they're not insulated. They are open. This is your conventional door and window frame. So move over to our fiberglass here, looking more towards this. Looking at like 74, 75. So from the non-insulated house, looking at it, it is a drop in our temperature. I might get a second reading. Yeah, if up top here, it says like 79, 80 degrees. So from 80 degrees to 75, these are all, all three of these are heated with 100-watt heaters, all running at 100 degrees. And then moving to the foam insulation, you can see on that, looking at about 73, 74. It's kind of going in between. So looking at, like I said, this is what the conservationists will use to clock in all different kinds of insulation. And the drop from the 80 degree to the 73 degree is actually very significant in saving yourself money on energy costs. So that would be the best and most accurate representation of three different kinds of insulation.
Right. Do they bring in a mock-up and actually, do you actually have hands-on training on the spray foam?
It is, yes, it is only for especially trained that will use it.
What I'm saying, do they do it in the shop or no?
We use, we use a can insulation, which is, it's more of a, say, shop-safe way to do it. We didn't have any training in using the like truth field insulation, if you will. And that does take training to use with the polyurethane mix and it being highly flammable, contact to skin. Any other questions?
That was great.
I just want to say thank you to all you guys for having us here tonight. And a big thank you to our shop teachers and National Grid for making this possible.
We have one more presentation over here. Sarah Duesch and David Stern want to talk to you about different types of lighting options and energy efficiency alignment of those dimensions.
So basically, we created this project. We worked with other shops, just like Carpentry was saying. So we wired it, Carpentry built it, and P&amp;D made these nice signs for us to demonstrate their different levels of efficiency. So basically, in this project, we are comparing the three different light bulbs, incandescent, CFLs, and LEDs. When light bulbs first came around, you know, Edison days, whatever, regular, probably what you guys are used to and what's in your house, we have incandescents, very yellow, warm color, probably what you guys are used to. Then over time, they wanted to get light bulbs more efficient, so they created the CFL. And, but people didn't really like that, didn't really have the same color. It had a more cool, less intense color to it. So over time, they had different colors. You can see that this one is more similar to the incandescent bulb. And then as uh technologies increased and ideas were going, LEDs were invented, which as you can see also has a very cool color. A lot of people do not like this color. But, you can, as you can see, they've dated different colors. This is kind of like a mid color, I guess. And this is more yellowy, very similar to the incandescent and this uh twenty-seven Kelvin CFL. So basically, there's a scale for this uh light. But all you really need to know is there's cool lights, there's warm lights. Most people prefer the warm lights because they're more inviting.
So as far as cost goes, when you get with incandescents, when you go out to buy them, they'll only be about a dollar. The CFLs will be about two, and then LEDs will be about four. So obviously, these will be more expensive, but over time, with LEDs, their expectancy uh expectancy is about two to three times more than CFL and then that much more of an incandescent. So the time management will save you money with an LED and even with the CFL compared to an incandescent. And so over time, with cost, you'd want to go for a um LED. Any questions? Yeah.
Um, on the LEDs, one of the things I noticed, uh, I got some spotlights in my kitchen. One of the things I noticed when you first put them on, they come on very dim and then kind of heat up. Are they gonna solve that? So when you put them on, they come on automatically or how do they solve that?
Well, I'm not sure about that with the LEDs and it also happens with the CFLs. But with incandescents, that does not happen.
Right.
And I'm sure that people are probably working on that with LEDs.
That's the only thing I didn't like about the LEDs. Everything else is great, but you put it on, you gotta, okay, hurry up.
Go to lunch.
All right, so they, they're working on that, right?
They do that so you don't hurt your eyes.
Yes, exactly.
If there are no questions, I just want to thank you folks.
That was great.
Did you want to mention that uh P and D um also had a, played a great role in this and helping us finish off these products as well as that, a big sign over there. There's other signage that they made for these, these particular projects. They're gonna help self-explain what, what the systems are at trade shows and places like that. Also, engineering, engineering department was involved. Um, they did some time and temperature studies on the houses with insulation uh and some uh power usage studies on the LEDs and other pictures.
I just have one question. How did this, how did this project work in with the regular work that was going on in the shops? Was this in addition to that on the side or was it, how did it fit in with the pretty high workload that they already have in the shops?
So uh, I know from the HVAC side, cause I was uh heavily involved in that project. They were learning heat pumps uh last year as uh as juniors, as soon as now, and that was part of the curriculum. So it was actually quite interesting and they were much more involved in the project because they actually built the system from scratch as opposed to just hooking some lines up and.
But this didn't take, this didn't replace any of the standard curriculum in the shop? This was in addition to that?
Um, I would say that to a small degree, it was an addition, but uh, and they did work some extra hours either in the morning or the afternoon. But uh, it didn't supplant any of the curriculum that was uh supplemented in a fashion.
Thank you very much, guys. Great job. Next item on the agenda. I have Curtis, but I don't see Curtis. Fair to say that we don't need him?
Not needed at this minute. Needed throughout the year.
So we will pass over Curtis's items. Mr. Scale. And I just want, Mr. Swayze, don't mind you, the kids were very gracious in providing you additional time. There is no requirement that you use your time plus theirs.
Mr. Chairman, you might, Mrs. Swayze joining you this evening.
Not at all.
We'd rather prefer.
That wasn't one of the choices.
Everybody good to go? Excellent. Uh, thank you for having me and Mr. Swayze here this evening. First item uh to talk to you about is the proposed calendar for next year, the W E T. In your packets, you'll find item nine point one, it's a can draft of the calendar. You can refer to that for a discussion. Uh, as usual, we have prepared a calendar that is consistent with the agreement with the teachers associations. That's a hundred and ninety-five days for staff and a hundred and ninety-three days for students. Uh, as you can see, the highlights here have us coming back on the fifteenth. Understand that it's actually August thirteenth and fourteenth would be new staff orientation. Uh, but the first day back with staff is uh in, as a whole, would be August fifteenth and we have our traditional two in-service days there. Freshmen coming back on that Friday, that's our typical pattern uh for orientation for freshmen. And all students resuming on August twentieth. As you fast forward up to Labor Day, uh, that typically gives us that additional uh two to three week contact time with students. Or again, our hundred and ninety-three days is one of the longest calendars, uh, the longest calendar in the state.
Anthony, excuse me, is that actual contact teaching? That is the.
One hundred and ninety-three.
Actual contact in front of the students?
Correct. Dr. Fitz?
Yeah, we want to.
We're gonna highlight one day.
Yeah, we, we want to make sure that the community is fully aware of, there's a modified one day in that. All right, so. If you like.
We'll explain it anyway.
When I get to it chronologically, I was gonna agree that. After Labor Day, we follow a very typical school, school year pattern. So we have the same uh releases for the uh Christmas vacation week uh as well as um the February winter uh break and the April vacation. The day in question uh that we're talking about is April twenty-sixth. And that's the Skills USA State Championship, uh, which I believe just a good portion of you have come and seen for yourselves. Uh, that's a special day for us. We have the honor of hosting the state championships for Skills USA here at Valley Tech. We've done that for nearly a decade at this point. I forget what year we're on now, seven, eight, nine, I'm not sure. But they like coming here and frankly, we didn't like the honor of hosting it. But it's a day where uh all of our staff are involved. Uh, they all have assignments. It's uh over a thousand competitors uh that are in the building and I would say at least that many faculty and staff coming from other schools as well. Usually, uh, the event uh is kicked off with uh significance, not only a welcoming by Dr. Fitzpatrick, but typically uh some high-profile uh either political figures or uh people of fame, if you will, uh, because it's a significant event for the state. The issue comes in, uh, how do you count that day? It's certainly without question a contact day with staff. Uh, they're here hosting and running the event. Uh, so it is one of their one hundred and ninety-five. In terms of students, we typically have somewhere around the neighborhood of one hundred competitors and usually a very large contingent of students who are volunteering to help as well. Uh, now we have debated back and forth, is that a contact day for students or not? Uh, is in our official school records, uh, it is not a, a contact day uh for students. However, obviously, uh, for a couple hundred of them, uh, it is. If we were to give up the honor uh or decline the honor of hosting, I can also tell you that it would be a day when we have, oh, I don't know, thirty, forty-plus uh staff who would be leaving the building uh to go to wherever states are uh if they weren't here. And they would be taking over a hundred kids with them. Uh, and so I can't sit here and say to you that that is uh a normal contact day. And that's the asterisk that Dr. Fitzpatrick and I were putting on that. I believe with that, unless I want to get into the conversation deeper, uh, but basically, um, it's a hundred and ninety-two contact days with students with an asterisk on the hundred and ninety-third day. And the staff, again, are all here and are all assigned various tasks on that day. So it, you know, without question, it's one ninety-five for the teachers contract. Yep, thank you. This year's calendar brings us to uh May thirtieth graduation day. And our last day of classes is tentatively the eighteenth, if there were no snow days next year. Questions on the calendar as proposed? Yes?
I did a quick, is that five half-days or five early dismissals rather?
Typically, we have somewhere between five to seven. And that, that follows the same pattern that we've been using for years. We do the uh half-days because they do uh still constitute a contact day with students. And we prefer the uh late start model, which is usually is inverted, inverted from typical schools. Uh, what that allows us to do is the students come in at ten-thirty. That doesn't interfere with after-school programs, sports, activities, extra help, all those types of things are still happening. Uh, school lunches are served, uh, the whole bit. Uh, whereas if you, the typical model is a, is a early release for students and you jeopardize all of those after-school activities. So it's a way we've been able to get in uh almost a, a good full three-hour in-service and still have some continuity with instruction.
So even though it says early dismissal, it's actually more of a late arrival.
It's a late start.
Yeah, you work, you do the second half of the day instead of the first half.
Correct, correct. We found it to be fair.
As a parent, it's fabulous.
I was gonna say, I bet the kids find it very unofficial to.
Nobody argues with sleeping in.
I remember it's when you're on the half-day, you, you work, you get up, you do all that and then you're leaving really before you've gotten with the cobwebs.
Yeah.
Jerry, did you have something? I thought you started your hand up.
No, no.
I'd like to make the motion to accept two thousand eighteen nineteen calendar.
Motion made by Mr. Levin, second by Ms. Mitchell to accept the calendar as presented in nine point one. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Calendar is approved. Thank you very much. Item nine point two is the practical nursing graduation update. Uh, this event is forthcoming and Miss Hannington reminded me, we usually give the update after graduation. And I said, well, I'd like the opportunity to invite them all. Uh, so it's simply on this end uh of things, it is coming up next week. Um, and wanted to make sure that you're all aware that you're welcome to attend, encouraged to do so. Uh, Dr. Fitzpatrick and I will obviously be there with Ms. Monks uh putting on the ceremony for our graduating class. And uh, we look forward to it. I believe we also, we have the uh Veterans Affairs Coordinator coming out this year.
I believe so.
Expected.
Expected. Uh, Secretary of Veterans Affairs for the state.
Veteran's Service, as you like.
Thank you. Uh, and basically, just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of it, that it was coming up and an opportunity to attend if you want.
If you have an opportunity and you can go, I highly recommend it. Um, I know Jerry has gone in the past, I've gone a number of times. It is amazing to see the pride that comes from a lot of these students' children. And the families that are in the audience. It is a great event. So if you have an opportunity, I would highly recommend attending.
Not too long. It's a fairly short ceremony. Uh, you know, you're talking about a handful of graduates, ten percent of our big gel uh that we have in May, but it is our second graduation that we have each year and just as significant as the one on May thirtieth.
What time is that again, Mr.?
Uh, six P M. In the competition center. Uh, moving on to nine point three, the Leading the Nation campaign. Leading the Nation is a marketing and advertising campaign that is being conducted by the state of Massachusetts, specifically uh the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. Uh, they don't typically do uh marketing campaigns or PR campaigns. Uh, the last time they did one was uh, oh boy, it was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years ago when the MCAS exams were first being administered for competency determination. So once the trial period was passed, a lot of bad PR, bad press around uh MCAS being a determinant for a graduation or a diploma. And uh, they did some television spots and commercials and I remember them well because I was in them. And it was, it was interesting. It was fun. Anyhow, uh, fast forward uh nearly twenty years and they're looking at doing some more. The uh past Commissioner, um, Commissioner Mitchell Chester basically did not believe in PR. Said you, you show it, you don't have to tell it. Uh, you show your, your worth, your performance um by your product, not by telling people that you're doing a good job. What we found out and, and through some surveying and polling was that, well, let me back up. Statistically, Massachusetts is the highest performing state academically out of all fifty states. Uh, they further discovered that if Massachusetts was its own country, uh, as compared by the TIMS and other exams, uh, international exams, it would be leading, it would be one of the highest performing countries in math science and English. And when asked, uh, let me say, when this fact or these facts were asked of or posed to uh students and parents in the state, twenty-five percent were aware of that metric. It was largely misunderstood. A lot of angst and, and agita over the MCAS exams and what basically are the accountability portion of ed reform. Not a lot of even awareness of the success of that, let alone uh the celebration of that success. What was even more alarming, and I think really convinced the commissioner, was that when educators were posed the same question, half of them were aware of that. So fifty percent of educators certainly aware of administering MCAS tests and teaching students and so forth, but not aware that their state was as proficient as it was. And that was very convincing to say, geez, we really should not only let people know, but hey, we should celebrate because it's been a long road. And that's really what Leading the Nation is, is a celebration that's kicking off in uh January of this year. Correct, January roughly? To celebrate Massachusetts, uh, ed reform, the success of it, uh, and basically the, the performance of our students in our state. Uh, to do that, they, they've put a whole campaign together. Um, Becky's actually taking uh the lead on Leading the Nation. Working with Nicole and others. We did have a spokesperson come out from the Department of Education. Uh, he visited with us a few weeks ago. And um, they're looking for approximately seventy or so schools that they would call beacons of light. And so showcases of ed reform and its success. So far, twenty, about twenty schools have committed to that. We are one of those twenty. Uh, we have a significant, significant place in history in that and role. I think many of you are well aware. You've seen our MCAS charts. They do go back to two thousand. Uh, and when, even prior with the testing, field testing and things like that, uh, that we did in, in many ways prove the inevitable question, could both tech students succeed in MCAS exams? And we're very much a part of that tapestry of success. Uh, and so we're eager to be part of that and not destined to be part of that. Whole bunch of events coming up this year uh that will celebrate staff, students, and accomplishments. Uh, there is going to be a bus tour, not, not unlike the governor's tour of excellence, and he also stopped by here, if you recall. And um, again, Becky's gonna coordinate this, but it will culminate in a state house visit. Uh, and we will attend and be represented there as well. Uh, we will also go through all of the normal channels of PR with our social media, Facebook, Twitter, website, uh, press releases and so forth. And certainly, we're looking forward to this opportunity to showcase success and excellence at B V T. Another opportunity. And um, I think Becky's gonna come back in March and give us an update on that and let us know where we are. Certainly opportunities for you guys to participate in that as well as our school board. Questions on that?
Are you gonna be in the commercials again or?
You know, well, maybe my good side. We'll wait this side.
Doesn't have a good sign.
I think my career's over, my face for radio.
They always liked Rich Brennan.
Okay, moving on. The football banquet, Michael mentioned earlier, is February 15th. It's going to obviously be in the evening, but we haven't set a specific time for that event. Michelle's working on the details. It will be a typical banquet-style celebration, presentation of things to the students, and dinner and so forth like that. But we wanted to kind of give you an early heads-up on that, so you can mark your calendars if you wanted to come and take part. Questions on the upcoming banquet? Okay, moving on. MCAS Next Generation Field Test. Want to talk about that?
Sure. So recently, we were notified by the Department of Ed that they were asking or requiring other all schools in Massachusetts to participate in a field test for the Next Generation MCAS, which is the online test, which we were made aware is coming. So now what they're doing is informing schools that they want to have a field test. And so what that means for us here is that about 77 sophomores will sit in a computer lab and kind of go through that field test experience. They are going to be doing it for ELA, so all students at Valley Tech will take the English field test here during the window of April 30th to March 4th. And so we're able to schedule kids into the computer lab for about two hours, that's what they're predicting, and give them the opportunity to try the test online, which is a different mode for testing than those kids have been accustomed to at this point in time. So we were notified of that. The state will choose those students at random, and then we will work with parents to inform them that this is what's happening. They do provide accommodations for students on 504s and ed plans, which should feel like a very normal testing experience for them. And so that's something that will be coming, more information is to come throughout February and early March, without April date. And so essentially, the goal for the state is to work the kinks out and the bugs on this online test for rollout in what they're hoping is about two years from now. So schools are held harmless for data, so, and we actually don't even get the student scores back, which is the most unfortunate part of this. So the kids will sit for the test and go through that experience, but we really won't know much after that point. We're very fortunate here that we have an infrastructure for technology that will support this. Not every school, you know, has the capability that we have, but our tech team is all set. Our computers are all set, software is all set, so we feel very comfortable with that aspect of the testing component. And so our kids will be going through that this coming spring. I guess what's most unfortunate about it is that these kids will have just taken the MCAS ELA test for real, for competency determination, and then we're gonna have them come back in about a month later and sit again for it, just to see how the experience goes. So that's an upcoming event for our sophomores that we were just notified about.
Just a question, how many students are gonna be taking it?
77.
Of the 77, how many will be in the 504 plan?
We don't know that yet.
Is there a percentage target the state's giving, or it's just...
They don't, they said it's completely random.
Really, so?
So we're not quite sure how that will work.
Will it be representative of what the audience at the school is, or are they gonna pick somebody to renumber?
They actually have not gone into that detail yet about that selection process. I'm not sure if that information is forthcoming. So we're just prepared for that student roster, but it's a very good question, because special ed and 504 students are representative of student body.
Correct.
And those accommodations look very different on a computer than they do paper, pencil, you know, highlighter, that kind of thing. So those would be the kids who really want to try it. So it's, the information is slowly coming to us, but we'll keep you posted.
I was just speaking with the principals group, and some of them are electing just to test their entire sophomore class. Saying, look, if you're gonna take 77 of them, what am I supposed to do with the other half of them during that time when they're testing everybody? So that's been one approach that I have heard out there. Essentially, the Department of Ed was going to identify the students themselves, and they would have all those metrics. So for example, if a student was on an IP or a 504 or what have you, they could simply generate a roster based on their SACID, state-assigned student ID, tell us exactly who is going to take that test or not, and control that aspect of the metric. Right, so, you know, the one, as Becky pointed out, controversy is, is it fair that the kids take the exam? And this is inevitably the part of every assessment effort. You have to test the test. If you don't have real students take it in real time and real conditions, you ultimately don't know if it's a valid assessment or not. I've always found that you, I didn't, I never saw the value in expending a lot of energy in that. It's a, it's a give and take. You know, it's part of a leader or leadership position. Help test the instrument. Give it your best shot, see if it's a good exam or not. Help them make it a good exam or not, because next year, we're all taking it. And so it's, in my view, has always been something that we simply contribute to the process in that way. And we ask our students to give it their best effort. A lot of people surmise things like, well, what if they all tanked it? Does that mean it would be an easier, you know, could we swing the metric and the cut score and everything else? If we just give it your best shot, see if it's a good assessment. I'd rather be dealing with a quality assessment next year than a flawed one, so we can give it our best go. And that's the positive attitude we've asked our students to put forward.
If I may say, what's the time lapse between them actually taking the one that counts and the time they actually had to take this one?
So they'll be taking the English about four weeks before this, but they're also taking the math test about three weeks after this. Some of them are gonna take the science test three weeks after that. So for some of our kids, they'll take three math tests that count, and this will be the fourth assessment for them next year, for this year, sorry.
Be interesting to see what they tell the kids as to whether this is, this is not, this is just a test.
It's funny that you mention that. I actually called the state today and asked them to provide us with a letter.
Yeah.
So that we can sort of, you know, use this data as the one that's, you know, requiring this. So I think it's helpful for parents to hear that it's not Valley Tech alone doing something like this, but this is a state initiative, it's statewide. This is the goal for them. So parents will be notified by mail by the state when that time comes.
Interesting. Cool. Thanks.
As far as taking it, I'm not sure that these kids are gonna be the ones taking the exam next year, so taking one to do them would be good.
No, it's more, these are more like hypothetical conversations that inevitably crop up around these types of situations. There's actually predictable metrics for exactly that, Mr. Fin, that it doesn't count. And so they expect a lower threshold of success.
Especially if you just took the...
And kids know, kids know, this doesn't count towards my graduation, for all the marbles. But it's predictably a lower performance on.
I would think, yeah.
What they're really looking for are things like, do students choose the wrong answer and why? You know, is a question worded in a way that is a trick question?
So they can look over time and say, more kids had a problem with this because the question isn't...
They invalidate specific questions.
Oh, okay.
Or invalidate answers. So it was multiple choice, and a lot of people were picking the wrong answer. You can statistically see that.
Yep.
In the key values on the, on the actual assessment afterwards.
Yep.
They say, well, what is it about choice D that keeps tricking kids? And you realize there's two meanings to that word, or the question was misleading, and create a better test. So what happens is, they would never see this exam again, but it's like paying it forward. Right, so the kids behind you are gonna, and they, you know, will you leave? I say, I always ask the kids to leave Valley Tech better than they found it. Leave the state better than you found it. Make sure the next guy has a good test. Give it your best shot. See what we learn from it. And you can only do that if people try it.
Good point.
Just my thought.
Right, two cents. Any questions on the field testing?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, the topic we can all benefit from. Reproductive health and healthy relationships. I don't want to touch it, you take it. Get a curriculum coordinator.
So we, I wanted to update the committee on a curricular update. We did a major revamp to the health curriculum this year. And as part of our health curriculum, we found that students would benefit for more education around healthy relationships and reproductive health. So we're very fortunate that we have a school-based health center through Milford Hospital here. And through feedback from the nurse practitioner and even our school nurses, we realized that there was some education that we probably could provide the students. A lot of our kids had not had either topic since early middle school, and so now they're coming to high school, and there was a lot of misinformation or lack of information. So this year, we piloted two programs. All of our students participated in a healthy relationships program out of PE, and we were able to do that with Milford Hospital and a nonprofit called New Hope. And they're a free, free-of-charge nonprofit who, their mission is to work with students, to teach students about the components of a healthy relationship. And so our, all of our students participated in that program. Our faculty was present for that program. I myself was present for it, it was phenomenal. So our students went through a pre-test and a post-test. It was taught by younger staff members, the kids seemed to be really engaged. They asked a lot of really important questions, and we also were able to schedule follow-ups for those students afterwards. And as a result of that, our numbers for school-based health have gone up, which is, you know, excellent for kids who are seeking counseling and those sorts of aspects of mental health and wellness. Addition to that, we also revamped our reproductive health program, and that we focused on for sophomores. All of our sophomores during Term Two received an sex ed and reproductive health education. By law, we offer students an opt-out through parent permission, and we are really happy that we only had one student opt-out, which means that that entire class, with the exception of one student, participated in that program. And again, we pre-test and post-test those students to ensure that we have an understanding of what they're coming in with, and then are they in fact learning the material when they leave? And it's been very positive. Our school counselors were present for those meetings to ensure that students were comfortable and felt supported. We also separated the groups by gender. So we had all of our males together for that course, and then all the females were together to help with comparability for the lesson. So we continue to also track those students, and as a result, our school's health numbers that we report to the Department of Mental Health have increased. So it's been a really positive program for all of our students. And I'd like to recognize Brianna Dougherty, she's our nurse practitioner, she was really instrumental in creating the program and supporting the kids. So I think it's been a really successful curriculum update that we've had. So thank you.
Also, Brianna's area of study and expertise is reproductive health, so she's very, very skilled in that area. I jokingly was questioning, you know, with Becky and others, a school-based health, saying, we really need this, you know, come on, these kids know more than the adults do. And they showed me some pre-survey data that was to the contrary, you know, questions that I was surprised, so for example, students asking if it was possible to get pregnant, you know, with all of your clothes on. And, you know, you double-take at that and say that that's a serious question. Okay, they really do need some basic training, if you will.
That's right. That's right.
Issue more shop uniform. Do it again, slow down.
That's why we keep them out of the... We do that stuff, yeah.
But it was, it was very needed. Given the post-test results, we know that they learned a lot. So we're happy we did it, and have this systematically in place now, so it will reoccur every year with these various student groups, and we learned just as much with the healthy relationships as well. Things that you would take for granted or assume that they know and they don't. So, good stuff. Nice addition.
That's true.
Thank you.
Any questions?
One, that New Hope, is that a religious-based organization?
No.
Or is it just a...
It's a community health organization, and so it's...
Who sponsors it?
Milford Hospital.
Okay.
And they're also, they also have a connection with Birmingham Women's Hospital.
Okay.
So they're practitioners, social workers, and a physician oversees that. And I'm happy to send you information. They were, they were, the kids were blown away by this group of women who came in. They've already asked if they can sign up for next year. Yeah. No, this, we, we don't just go down that road. We have the students in school, so it's...
They'll come see you.
Yeah. They're fabulous, so we're happy to help. Sure.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Basic training is complete.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Levin. Mr. Levin, Anthony fortunately left you five minutes.
Okay, I'll take three. Okay, as you can see, you know, we've already done, we've had three meetings since the last time we've met, and we've done the first round of this 2,000, 7,000, district-wide technology. It was very interesting to see, you know, it's mind-boggling, but it's, you know, building, you know, trying to wait to see what the governor's gonna come out with for his budget to help us out. I mean, I really don't have anything else to say at this time, because we don't have the numbers. And I don't know, Doc, if you wanna fill in on that?
No, all the meetings were posted, they were held in public session.
Yep.
In the event someone asks, there isn't a need to meet on the snow date that was posted, we're not gonna use that date. So just every date but the snow backup date is consistent with the original schedule as posted.
Any questions?
The only other comment I've got is, in reviewing the budget, one of the things that stuck out, at least to me, was the need for textbooks. It's a, it's a real bona fide need, not only from the standpoint of it's nice because, you know, you need to have the latest update, but it's required by the state for certain type of qualifications to bring in a different type of textbook, say for Advanced Calculus or something like that. So there's a, we've got a real tiger by the tail in terms of what we have to do with textbooks. That's a big expense coming up, so I just wanted to let everybody here know at least that, that part of it took me by total surprise as to what not only is needed, but also what is absolutely required by the state, so, for what it's worth.
Yeah, and the other one is the history book. What was the last president in our history book?
Truman.
Yeah. You know, Lincoln, you know? So, I mean, yeah, our history books are a little behind the times, so we have to definitely upgrade.
I won't scare the parents, they're not that bad.
President Roosevelt. All right. So, anything else? No? Go back to it.
Next up, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Chairman, members of the committee, on January 9th, Mr. Steele and I joined two fine young candidates from Valley Tech who were honored at the University County Scholars' Luncheon. And as we have done over the past several years, the Valley Tech students printed the program. We've recognized them, almost 100 students in total, from central Massachusetts school system. We had the pleasure of being represented by a local candidate, Jaden LaFarris, and a Bellingham candidate, Troy LaFawn. And one of the most amusing things that I think Anthony and I would acknowledge that we've ever experienced is, it's customary that each candidate is introduced by a reader, who's a colleague, another superintendent, who summarizes the awards, or some of the awards, received by each person. And our two young men, like many of the others, had countless awards. I mean, they earned scholarship activities and college acceptances and AP and very impressive cumes or academic averages. And but, when Troy, who got up to speak after he had highlighted some of his recognitions, the reader said, however, Troy's most significant achievement was his acceptance of Blackwell Valley Tech. That sent a hush through the crowd, okay? And so it was kind of probably the greatest compliment I could ever get from someone with countless declarations. So that was a first for us. So we're pleased to see that you've met these individuals that have joined us, and we'll continue to report other excellence of that nature. Any questions?
Moving on. Last night, I had the pleasure of presenting to the Upton Zoning...
Last night, I had the pleasure of presenting to the Upton zoning board, as often as they would, to the Facility Subcommittee to Full School Committee, asking the zoning board to approve an additional residential classification of the zone in addition to the commercial and industrial of the gifted property that was gifted back in 2002. And Mr. Robb was present, and there's about 30 people in the audience that, not all of it for our issue, there were other petitions before the body. Any case, it was unanimous approval granted by the body that now will allow us to enhance the parcel, including the, you know, the full 28 acres, in the rare category of having all three zoning acquisitions. And I can imagine there's a lot of property in town that has all three, but in any case, we'll do that. So Paul, if you feel free to spread the word.
Is that called up for revision?
Yes, it will. Yeah, yeah. Curtis, actually, when I got home, I started to rework the bid, okay? And I gave that to Curtis this morning, so we're working on that right now. There is a 20-day appeal period of time following the coming of the 504s, but unanimous vote is.
Okay, yeah, with your vote, unanimous there.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be issued. There were some abutters present, you had reasonable conversation.
Probably double the value of the whole request.
Yeah, I have to say, in summary, I hope you agree, that the abutters who spoke might have spoken in favor of adding residential, but, you know, it's all good, and that's fine with us.
It was only one that had some concerns, and by the end of it, he was on board.
Yeah, Mr. Quinn, so we addressed that. So, we're pleased to report.
Good job.
Yeah, well, proof is in the bid. It's organized, so we'll go.
You have a couple Upton-based and Hope-Delby's contractors that were asking about the property.
Yeah.
And the whole thing came about, the residential part of it, so.
Yes, that is my understanding as well, that we actually asked people to give us a chance to make this change, to see what we can do, be on the lookout, and how we're able to go forward as we had hoped and as they had hoped, so.
Now, now it'll be, now it'll be a dogfight, it'll be good.
I like the way he thinks. I like the way he thinks.
That's what they say about that. Appreciate your confidence on that, and we'll keep it open. Any other questions on that? Seeing none? Item 11.3, the Mass Athletic Association, because of weather, did not hold their task force, so there's no report on that at this point. We'll continue to keep posting on that. Item 11.4, the more recent visitors included the team of people from the Worcester South Community Center and Lamerol Pravano architects, looking to replicate some of the programs we have within the Worcester system. And although it's not on the agenda, on Friday, we hosted the executive director of the Mass Business Alliance, one of the very respected business networks in the state, along with a key representative of the Smith Family Foundation, having some conversations. It's a Boston foundation that supports educational excellence, and they occasionally invite people to submit an application to them for funding. But their prerequisite is they get to invite. They don't just allow random proposals. So we'll see if, it's, again, it's kind of pretty consistent with our budgetary approach. We're looking at a variety of new revenues, whether it's the transfer of real estate into liquid funding or other kinds of savings on every end. That's another pursuit. That concludes our report.
Any questions for Dr. Fitzpatrick at this time? Seeing none? Next up, next on the agenda, new business. Do any members of the school committee have any new business to bring forward tonight? Seeing none, Doc, do you have any?
Well, we have had some family losses amongst staff members who reported losses, and so we will extend our support, you know, for any member of the family, extended family, you know, relative to losses. And we reckon, we acknowledge them when they occur. I mean, can't keep track of that 12 months a year, but that's been one of the things we've looked at in support.
Next, next item, items for the committee. Have the packet here available. If you need one, please just let Cheryl know. All right, next, regularly scheduled school committee meeting, March 8th. Little off cycle as we get a closer tour of the block this season. And that concludes the day, as listed on our agenda.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion made, second to adjourn. Questions, comments, or discussions? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those closed. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.